Welcome to the January Planning Commissioners Meeting. We welcome our Planning Commission members, staff, and guests. Multiple staff members are here today to ensure that the meeting will run smoothly and all applicants and members of the public are able to participate in the meeting at the appropriate times.
If you're here today and would like to speak about a case, please provide your name clearly into the microphone and please be sure to sign in either at the back of the room or at the podium for documentation purposes. If you're here today to speak about a case, you must speak up when the chairperson calls for public comment. I'll go ahead and call the roll. Mr. Cozy?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Cuvney?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Holtmeyer?
Here.
Ms. Marshall?
Here.
And Mr. Osorio?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We will now give a brief overview of the meeting format. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allowed a presentation time of 10 minutes. This time should include, but is not limited to, an overview of the project, case history, and any pregnant meetings held regarding the requests. This time also includes all persons representing the information on behalf of the applicants such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. This time is limited but does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding requests. During the public comment period, members of the general public are given an opportunity to address concerns in intervals of two minutes. After the public comment, applicants have five minutes to respond. Once the Planning Commission begins deliberations, no additional comments will be permitted by the applicant or the public. The administrator has a timer and will make presenters aware of their, when their time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There is one change since publication. Case number six, which is the first case on the regular agenda under future land use amendment and zoning amendment for a pending annexation, which is Annex-2024-0025 at 1401 Shop Road, has been deferred by the applicant. Other than that, the agenda stands.
The Planning Commission uses the consent agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion and vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public wants to discuss an item on the consent agenda, you must speak up after the consent agenda is read. Then that item is removed from the consent agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining consent agenda items. Will the staff please read the consent agenda?
Certainly. The first item on the consent agenda is to approve the December 12, 2024 minutes. Next, under future land use amendment and zoning amendment for a pending annexation, we have case number two, Annex-2024-0026, 421 Piney Woods Road. Request recommendation on the assignment of a land use classification of urban edge mixed residential, UEMR, and the assignment of zoning of planned development district for a pending annexation. The property is currently classified as mixed residential high density and zoned HM by Richland County. Under zoning map amendment, case three, ZMA-2024-0014, 1205 Colleton Street. Request recommendation to rezone the property from residential single-family small lot district, RSF3, to mixed-use district MU1. Pardon me. Case four, ZMA-2024-0015, Bluff Road. Request recommendation to rezone the properties from Community Activity Center Corridor District, CAC, and residential mixed district, RM2, to Employment Campus District, EC. And under preliminary plat review, case five, Splat-2024-0015, 4200 Old Leesburg Road. Request preliminary plat approval for new construction of a 201-lot, single-family subdivision, the Canary Woods Phase Four. The property is zoned RSF3 residential, single-family, small lot district. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Is there anyone from the Planning Commission or the public that would like to have any item removed from the consent agenda? Would you come forward to the mic, please, sir?
On your preliminary plat review number five, I want to discuss with somebody some of the different details about this plan of what they're building and how they're doing it, and can any of it be changed? I.e., they're building phase three behind it now, and I own the property, some of the property that joins it, and it's being trashed by all the building material and everything they had. And I want to know, number one, can they put up a fence to protect my property from trespassing and all this trash that I'm getting? Two, there are two ponds upland from this property. Did a creek bed drains down through? Did they make any provisions of this? I don't know what they done in... Three, I was not present for those meetings.
And just for the record, would you state which one that you're concerned about?
Ma'am?
What number are you concerned about, sir?
I think it's number five.
Number five?
Five, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So you'd like to see that removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments concerning the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion from the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus removing number five, 4200 Old Leesburg Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly second that we remove item number five, plat 2024-0015, 4200 Old Leesburg Road, TMS number 22113-01-01 from the consent agenda. Are there any questions? All those in favor, let it be known by the sign, aye?
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carried. The Planning Commission now will move forward with those agenda items on the regular agenda, including the one that was removed from the consent agenda. We will use the following outline for the regular agenda items. The administrator will introduce the case. The applicant will have 10 minutes to make a presentation. The Planning Commission may ask questions. The public comment period will be open to those present. The public comment period will be closed. The applicant will have five minutes to respond to the public comments. The Planning Commission may ask additional questions of the applicant. Deliberation and action by the Planning Committee will occur. Once the Planning Commission begins deliberation, no additional comments will be permitted by the applicant or the public.
That's going to bring us to item number five, which is a major subdivision preliminary plat approval at 4200 Leesburg Road, TMS number 22113-01-01. And this is the 49.13-acre parcel is located in the 4200 block of Old Leesburg Road. The proposed subdivision is the fourth phase in the Canary Woods subdivision and will contain 201 single-family residences. The average lot will be approximately 6,300 square feet, and a portion of the site will be preserved as open space. From a staff perspective, if the Planning Commission should grant approval of the site plan, we will request that they do it with staff comments. There are a series of staff comments outlined in the case summary, however, those are standard in nature. There is one thing I'd like to point out. There is an emergency access road that does connect to Old Leesburg Road. However, that's an emergency in nature and will only be accessed in the case of an emergency from emergency services. And I believe the applicant may be here to further explain their case.
Is the applicant present?
Doesn't look like they're here.
So is, staff, is there any continuation that we can carry on since the applicant's not present?
Yeah, we can continue to have the Planning Commission discuss the case and ask for public comments.
Is there any questions or concerns expressed from item number five on the agenda by the Planning Commission?
Madam Chair, I'd like to hear from the public first to see what the concern is before, I guess, given that it had already been included and on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone here, since the applicant's not present, from the public that would like to express a concern, consent in item number five on the consent agenda? Yes, sir, you may come forward.
Sorry, I'm a little hard of hearing and have a hard time sometimes understanding you.
Would you mind stating your name just for the record before you start speaking? Thank you.
Vandy Waller. Vandy, with a V, Waller. Some of the property that joins this, some of this property has been in my family for like four generations, and we lived in the county, and now the city is on the fence, literally, to us next door. I'm not sure how this changes the housing process, but I thought it was supposed to be like 125 houses, and I see there's 200 and something houses. It's like, are they making the lot smaller? I'm not sure. But some of my concerns are when they, they're developing the phase three, this is phase four, which they're fixing to start cutting the timber to build the houses. And in phase three, where they've leveled the property and they're building the houses with this wind and different things, all their trash is now on my property that blows off, and I don't see why they can't police that area some, number one. But two, I would like to see if the builder could put a fence between my property and theirs on this whole line to keep, number one, this trash off of my property and people trespassing, since I have a wooded area. I'm concerned about small children and kids coming onto my property and setting it on fire, that kind of thing. So I'm asking for a fence. Can they, the other phase that they built around from this, phase one of Canary Woods, they put a fence all the way across the back, and then when they got to three, they didn't. And that's why I'm kind of bringing this to attention. The other thing that I want to know, and I'm assuming this is probably for the builders, but I don't know if the city has involvement. There are two ponds uphill that come from Ridge Road, Lauritson Boulevard area. One pond drains into another pond, another pond drains through my land down and into this subdivision, and when I walk my property line, I don't see any provisions if that pond overflows where this water goes. And I simply need to know, are they making anything to build a, like a temporary dike or dam or something that would hold some water, or making a way for this water to drain on through? At some point in the future, I wouldn't want to be responsible for one of these 2,000-year floods that come through, whether it broke, breaks the pond down or not, but comes down through there, and nobody knew anything about it. I'm just trying to bring that to their attention. And that's all I really wanted to know.
Look, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hold on just a minute, sir.
Do you mind, what property did you say, I'm sorry?
Can you point to the property?
On the property to the east of it.
Okay, east.
That's right. It's about eighty, eight acres. Eighty-eight or eighty-nine acres right there.
So the parcel with the second pond on it, or your, your property?
My, my property has one pond, and there's another pond where you see the first pond there, and that's mine, and the next one belonged to a family member's deceased, and it's gone down to their grandkids now. Nobody lives on that property, but their pond feeds my pond, and my pond drains down into that land.
Your property borders the entire east side of the subdivision?
That's right.
Okay.
And there's a small section that I have a family member that probably has five or six acres up there, that top corner up just a little bit, over to your left. Right there, I've got a family member that owns five or six acres right in there.
Okay.
And, but I would like to see them put a fence all the way down just to try and help protect me and my property and kids from coming over.
Quick question of staff. Was there no provision for any buffering between this gentleman's land and the parcels, the new parcels?
It's a single-family residence adjacent, so I do not believe that there's a required buffer between the adjacent land use.
It doesn't appear to be one on the drawing.
Are there any other questions from council?
Can we require them to put a fence? That's not something we can do, is it?
If there's, if that's a condition that the Planning Commission would like to ensure that there's a buffer between these two properties, it's totally in your purview to suggest that, to make that a condition.
Thank you.
And a fence would qualify as a buffer, I mean, by that definition?
It'd be opaque in it, like I said, that would be a condition.
Like a privacy fence. I imagine the property owners may appreciate that, too, the new homes. On the drainage issue, would there be any way to figure out if stormwater review looked into the issue that he's bringing up?
Stormwater review is that they meet all, they've looked at it and that they require that the development meet all land disturbance requirements. So stormwater's looked at it.
I might add that even when they built the phase, I'm not sure if it was phase one or two of Canary Woods, but the property to the backside of there, they were burning building materials and set my property on fire and took a bulldozer and went through my property to cut the fire out, and I didn't know it, just happened to find it. Nobody ever contacted me about it, but I would like to just protect what's mine from this. That's my concern.
When you say that they haven't provided any provision for the stormwater coming from that pond?
That I'm aware of.
Okay. Is that by reviewing the plans or having an engineer review the plans to see if that's the case, or is that just by what you see on the ground?
What I see on the ground.
But they haven't started construction yet, so you don't really know, right?
On the piece down the hill, you see where, it's hard to see on there, where the pond comes from that second pond, comes down to a creek bed, down towards this corner right here with the red, and you see the housing development right here that come down, right there. That's where that creek comes through, is right there towards that corner, and I see no provision right there that would stop that water.
So that actually would be in a previous phase where that water comes onto the property?
I believe that's Canary Woods Phase Three.
Yeah.
The previous phase.
It looks like, but I don't know. I haven't reviewed the drawings.
Before or during any of this construction process, have the developers come and spoken to you and your family members that own the property about anything or asked about the impact?
Never, never seen anybody. In fact, even the sign that they posted this in the original phases back there, when they started getting closer to Leesburg side, they would put a sign on the dirt road, not on the paved road, Leesburg, where everybody travels. In fact, there's not a sign out there now on Leesburg, it's only on the dirt road, and very few people travel that dirt road, which is another concern about where the exits was, or if they're going to pull all of these houses back out to Trotter Road and not put them on that dirt road, I'm assuming, but, because the next thing I don't want them to do is to try to pave that road.
Any other questions for the applicants, for me? Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate your input, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this case concerning the 4200 Old Leesburg Road?
I do have another question for staff. If we were to recommend a fence, do we need to stipulate the specifics of that fence?
Yes, that would be best.
And I would think, I mean, that there's no applicant here just imposing a fence arbitrarily. It's a long fence, would it be better to defer this project if we're going to be inclined to impose a fence as part of the conditions? It just, it just worries me to say, hey, you've got to build a fence, and now that's a done deal, and who knows if that's actually necessary, or, I mean, maybe it is, but the applicant certainly probably have some feedback on that, so I would think deferring it would probably be a better option.
Yeah.
Is there a motion from the Planning Commission?
From, and, and I would add, if, if you do defer it, if you do approve it with the fence, the applicant could come back and ask to be relieved from that condition as well, just throwing that out there as well.
So would that be like an appeal? They would come back to the, as an appeal, or?
I think they would just come back and ask to be relieved of that condition.
So, Steve, I understand your point. But I think they've met all of the other requirements for the site plan approval, so deferring it or disapproving it may not be the... Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, actually, could you come back up for one second? Vandy, right? From your perspective, what level of fence or buffer provides the protection or the buffer you're looking for?
In the phase, I'm not sure if it was one or two, they put a wooden fence up, I think, six foot high. That's what I would like to have, something that kids couldn't cross and trash and different things. Even the phase one, the residents on that site that's built now throw certain items over the fence. That's just something I have to deal with. But all of the other trash is just blowing through, and to keep, you know, the small kids and stuff out from getting to those ponds to protect myself, I think a wooden solid fence is what I would like. That's what they built on the other side going around, down from that, on the bottom side, on the other phases that they built.
Okay.
And I'd like to see them build the same thing.
Did they build that fence while they were doing the construction or after construction was finished on the houses?
To be honest with you, I don't know. I can't really see this property from where I live and didn't know that it was going on at the time. It's almost a mile from where I live, and I don't, all I know is it got built when the houses was built, and I don't know if it was before the house or after the house.
Okay.
And I mean, they could, they could actually have plans to build a fence that just hasn't come up yet, it's possible that that's the case, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Splat-2024-0015, 4200 Old Leesburg Road, TMS number 22113-01-01, conditioned upon the applicant installing a fence along the entire east side of this project phase, six feet high and solid wood, along with any other staff comments.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
It's been moved improperly second that we approve Splat-2024-0015, 4200 Leesburg Road, TMS number 22113-01-01, with the applicant installing or building a wooden solid fence around the property and with additional staff comments. Are there any questions or additional comments? All in favor, then let it be known by the sign, aye?
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
One nay? Okay. Motion carried, thank you. We will move now to the regular agenda items, number five, number six, excuse me.
It's deferred. Six is deferred.
That's right, thank you. Number six, item number six is deferred. I forgot about that. We'll move now to the zoning amendment, number seven. Zoning number seven is for ZMA-2024-0016, 427 Harden Street, TMS 11311-03-07.
Hi, good afternoon. The next case on the agenda is ZMA-2024-0016, which is 427 Harden Street, tax map number 113110307, and it is a request for a recommendation to rezone the property from residential mixed district, which is RM1, to residential, single-family, medium lot district, RSF2. What I do want to mention is that, you know, I want to acknowledge some of the comments that have come in. There were two emails that you received from Elaine Michael and also from Betsy Dimmeri and Terry Dimmeri, which, which you should have received. I also have two more emails that, I apologize, I'm getting copies made right now to distribute to you, to y'all. And as you can see, this is a rezoning that is upon a request of a council member. And also, I did want to mention, and this is in regards to one of the emails that you received, it mentions that the, the city changed the zoning during our recent UDO. That, well, that's technically correct. Our, you know, the zoning district is now RM1, which is a, you know, it, it allows for, you know, general residential and a mixture of residential uses. It's essentially the same district as the prior district that was in place for decades, which was RG1, which is also a general residential district, it's just kind of the translated district in our new ordinance.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak concerning the zoning amendment? You may come forward. And if you would, please state your name for the record.
My name is Sydney Rex. Madam Chairperson and members of the Planning Commission, first of all, thank you for your service. I understand that this is a volunteer position. I know that it takes a lot of time and dedication, so thank you for your service. I am a resident of 142 Edisto Avenue, also a, an owner of 201203 Wacquemaw Avenue. I am in favor of this very strongly. A number of our neighbors are going to talk about the historic value of this property. They're going to talk about the nature of the neighborhood around it, which is primarily single-family, particularly in lots of this size. One of the other things that they're going to talk to you about is the predation of college housing on our neighborhood and how it affects those of us who live there with our children to have rowdy college students partying at all hours. I'm also going to talk to you, because this is the, about your role in the community, which is to plan for our future. 2025 is the drop-off for the demography of college applications. So we are hitting the peak now of baby boomers' children. College applicants are going to be dropping. Therefore, we do not need more college housing. We have plenty of it here. However, we family housing. And you can look into housingsc.com to learn about the housing shortage that we're experiencing in Columbia, South Carolina. We absolutely need more rezoning in this area and definitely not more student housing. So thank you for your time. I'll let my neighbor speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there other applicants that'd like to speak?
Hey, we are Carol and Caitlin Hayward, we are the immediate neighbors on four fifteen Harden Street, and we are, we have, uh, concerns about the house, um, uh, immediately as, as Sydney had mentioned, um, going from a single-family and, uh, beautiful historic, uh, uh, house to, um, being developed into something we've heard with possible thirty-two, uh, uh, homes, not homes, excuse me, uh, thirty-two rooms going in, and are very concerned about that much added congestion possibly going to college kids, um, we've got a young family, um, we've put a lot of money into our house, um, into the Bailey Bill, trying to, um, keep it going, it's also an old house, um, and then also with all of the work that's being done in Five Points, trying to get it away from being a college corridor and, uh, all of the, the new traffic work that's being done, adding thirty-two possible people into rush hour traffic on that intersection is just scary to me.
Good afternoon, my name is Caitlin Hayward, um, I just wanna give you a little bit of a history of our time on Harden Street, we bought four fifteen Harden in twenty nineteen, it was crumbling, um, our neighbor's house next door is also historic, but ours is on the National Register, it's the Wallace Muggie House, it's a gem, we have poured our savings into that house, this proposal will devalue our house to a point that we will lose most of it, because nobody is gonna pay what we have put it back into it, we will not make our money back, when we moved into that house, the walls were crumbling, it's, it's made out of concrete, we did historic plaster restoration even before we applied for the Bailey Bill, we did lots of improvements because there was so much water damage, since then, I won't tell you how much non-Bailly Bill work we've done since we've been approved for the Bailey Bill, but we've exceeded the requirement that we have to make to, to meet the Bailey Bill, we've spent over two hundred thousand dollars on windows, on replacing the roof, I have, I'm about to replace another roof for another fifty thousand dollars. We have a eight-year-old and a four-year-old, and we are real people standing before you asking you to please don't do this to your neighbors, to your constituents, um, we signed up for the Bailey Bill because we're, and we bought this house because we're passionate about historic restoration, Carol is on the board of Historic Columbia, and whenever any organization wants to use our house for anything, we've never said no, Columbia Green, um, has, we've been featured on Columbia Green when they asked, we were featured just this year on, um, the Homes for the Holidays Store, um, our doors are open, and this is gonna change our lives, and it's, you know, we're the, everybody in this room is probably very upset about the potential impact, the aesthetics of the neighborhood, and the, you know, the number of cars driving up and down the street, but this is affecting our, like, life savings, so we're asking you to please approve and, and keep it as a single-family residence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First, I just wanna say thank you for your service on this board, every time I walk in the City Hall, I'm reminded of what a beautiful building we have here, this is the People's Building, I'm honored to serve in the legislature for this area, so I come before you actually in a couple capacities, as an elective representative, but also I live right down the street from this, I wanted to come and speak as a citizen, but also in support of my neighbors, we have a lot of great things happening in Columbia, we have a lot of road projects that are pedestrian-friendly projects, um, I helped secure five million dollars for a pedestrian-friendly project right down the street from this location in Five Points, it's gonna be transformative for the area, the merchants are very excited about that, and we feel like projects like this are gonna undermine the progress that we're making, there's gonna be future projects on Divine Street, Assembly, um, the, the railroad trestle that's gonna stop the railroad, the train on Assembly from blocking our commutes around Columbia is about to be fixed, we just got word on that, and so, great things are happening, and I can speak on behalf of our community and our, our neighborhoods that we feel like there's a, an intrusion with student housing, um, I think, you know, you just heard from Carol and Caitlin who are wonderful people, this is a young couple that are very well-educated, they're successful young professionals and they could live wherever they wanna live, but they wanna live right here in downtown Columbia, and they chose this location because it is of its historic nature, and this is a great place to live, and this is where we want young professionals, young couples to want to reside, they have young children, they've spent their savings saying this is where we wanna live, and to now have this ripped from them and, and be living next to something completely different, we think goes against the best interests of the city, so I just wanted to come and first thank you for, for your service, but ask that you please support this rezoning request to single-family residential, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, for me just to come up, I represent the old folks that still wanna live there too.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Kit Smith, I'm currently the president of the Wells Garden Association, but we have not taken an official position, so I'm really here in my personal capacity, and there are really about three points I wanted to make, just to reinforce some things, the first of all is that our zoning law purpose says on, in number eight, that its purpose is to maintain strong neighborhoods and protect their character, so I would submit that the current zoning does not do that. And the new zoning proposed would be a step forward in doing that, the second thing is that I couldn't decide which analogy to use, death by a thousand cuts or the boa constrictor, remember the boa constrictor song, oh gee, it's up to my knee and now it's up to my neck, we have lost four homes in the last month to student housing, and I don't object to students having parties, and in fact, I was in the home in question now to be disciplined by the dean of students when he lived in that house when I was at Carolina, so I know about how students can behave, but our main concern is the loss of homes, and when you start losing homes to short-term rentals or to student housing, you start losing the integrity of your neighborhoods, and this would be one of those deaths by a thousand cuts should we lose this home, one doesn't seem like a lot, but by the time you have a hundred, it's a lot, and we're getting them more and more, the third thing I wanted to do is to invite you to visit our neighborhoods and ride through the inner-city neighborhoods for those of you who don't live there, go through University Hill and see what's happening to those grand old homes being cut into duplexes, ride through Olympia, which is the largest intact mill village in America, it's no longer family residences, come to my neighborhood, Wells Garden, go next door to Wheeler Hill where they're building five-bedroom houses, and then ride by MLK where they're building ten-bedroom places, so we are under attack in the inner city, and I don't, maybe attack's too harsh a word, but we're afraid, and we need your help in protecting our neighborhoods, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Myers Truluck, and I'm resident of Harden Street, um, I'm here to speak, um, for the zoning change, um, I understand that the prior zoning did allow multifamily housing, um, the, the reason this, this change is so important, this, this, this parcel contains a one-hundred-year-old house that was designed by Lefay, Lefay, very important house, and it has absolutely no protection, it's bordered on one side by the Wells Garden historic overlay, which is protected, I mean, its neighbor to the right is protected, its neighbor to the left is, is on the National Register, and it has, uh, um, individual landmark status, so it's protected, but this house is, is, is fair game, and, and it's a huge lot, its proximity to Five Points, you know, it's, it's, it's doomed if, if, if we don't get this change, um, it, it will be torn down, it will, there will be student housing, and like everybody else has said, we've reached our threshold with student housing, and we're almost at a tipping point where the neighborhood's gonna flip over and just no longer be a, a place where people wanna live anymore, families are gonna move out, and all, all the remaining houses are gonna be student housing, and it used to be a premier neighborhood in Columbia and still can be, and I, I highly rec- recommend that y'all move forward with this proposed zoning change, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here for us, I'm pretty honored to be in here in this room and think about all the pictures I have of my dad when he was on city council, so I live in a house that's about four doors, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Ann Tuller, T-U-L-L-E-R. So I live at, um, three twenty-five Harden, in a house that my grandparents built in nineteen twenty-nine, so just about the same time that the Whitten's house was being built, and so I have been in that neighborhood for seventy-nine years, either living in that house or visiting my grandparents there, I currently am the third generation, and I got the house when my older brother died in twenty nineteen. Columbia is a beautiful city with historic value, we have beautiful neighborhoods, and we like to think of where we live as a beautiful neighborhood that we would like to keep that way, I have a grandson that's twenty-seven years old, and he's already told me so many times, Gaga, I would love to live there one day, so it is our heart to want to protect our neighborhood, and we appreciate the fact that you guys want to protect our city too. You know, I think not having beautiful neighborhoods in a city would be a very sad thing, because I think it's part of the attractions to Columbia, so I would, um, just hope that y'all would see it i- in a way that you would protect that property, which is beautiful, and I also have a question, that if that could just through restructuring zoning areas change that house that for seventy-nine years that I've been around has been nothing but families, does that mean that it's possible that the zoning for my house four doors down has changed also?
Steph, do you have any comments on her question?
I mean, it's hard to answer exactly, but probably not, um, did you wanna? I mean, when the new zoning ordinance was, is that what you mean, when it was rezoned? Largely, the residential districts were given the same, you know, it might have a new name, but like Andrew was pointing out, it was a equivalent, so the same uses are allowed, so likely it wasn't changed, it was just a new name.
I see, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you did.
Hi, I didn't sign up, I wasn't planning on speaking today, my husband is Myers Truluck, that's my eight-year-old son, Troop Truluck, my name is Elizabeth Truluck, we live at one twenty-nine Harden Street, we moved to Columbia in two thousand seventeen from Savannah, our first home that we bought, we have invested like the Hayward's, everything that we own, in twenty twenty, July fourth weekend, we came home to construction bulldozers knocking down trees at the lot next door to our house, we bought the house from the original owners, the Hooks, it was built in nineteen thirty-seven, we didn't know that the lot had been rezoned and was allowed for mixed use at that, or for, uh, multifamily at that point, it was initially zoned for single-family when the Hooks split the lot when we bought the home, so we were very surprised to come home after a holiday weekend and discover bulldozers knocking down dogwood trees that Mrs. Hook had planted eighty years before, our son, we have a little dog, I don't allow him to walk the dog around the neighborhood, not because I feel unsafe, because it's a beautiful neighborhood, it's very safe, but because we have college kids who are looking at phones, who are driving recklessly, who are pulling out of driveways, not paying attention to where they're going, and I don't feel safe to have him be able to walk around the neighborhood, I've had to go out multiple times on Waukamaw, which our backyard faces Waukamaw, our front yard's Harden, and address college kids who are shirtless and playing beer pong and having parties in their yard, they're not violating any ordinances that I'm aware of at the time, because it's earlier in the day, they know how to play the game, but they leave trash, they are destructive, they are, I'm hard of hearing, if I can hear their party inside of my house, then I know there's a major problem, okay, we're talking about people who have invested everything that we have and just wanna protect a neighborhood, keep it safe, allow it so that our children can walk the streets, so that we can walk to Five Points and have supper with our family and walk home and not feel, we walked right by Ms. Whitten's house, I used to see her every day, picking up trash up and down Harden, she cared about the property, she cared about the neighborhood, when, during twenty twenty, my son painted little rocks to take her around to cheer everybody up around the neighborhood, we took one to her home and she had just passed away, we met her daughter-in-law and spoke to her at length about the property, this is a neighborhood that is built on those types of relationships, and I have nothing against college because they're fun, I've been one myself, and so there's not an objection to that, but it's an objection to losing our way of life and losing something that cannot be regained, is a hundred-year-old property with old growth trees, with this large lot, with every, all of the integrity that that carries with it will be forever lost if this is not approved, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Nikki Finney, I'm a poet and I am a USC professor, I moved here from Lexington, Con- I was born in Conway, raised in Sumter, left, uh, at eighteen, taught at the University of Kentucky for twenty-six years, and in twenty thirteen, my father, who happened to be, um, the first African-American Chief Justice of the South Carolina Supreme Court, was diagnosed with Alzheimer's, and so I came home to keep writing my books, keep teaching, and to find a hundred-year-old house that I could be quiet in, and, um, I found this amazing neighborhood, uh, half of which is here behind me today, and I, um, I, I don't like to speak at functions like this, I like, I would rather read you a poem, but, um, I wanted you to know, if you haven't seen the inside of this house we are debating, that the windows are very much like the windows in this beautiful room, they are, uh, what, what shall we call that architecture, I'm not sure, but they're, they're oval, um, when you walk through every room in this house, you can't get that again, the nineteen seventies oak walls may be a little funky for some people, but many people have lived there, and part of my responsibility as a, as a poet and as a teacher, um, I always tell my students, I say, do you know the word character, do you know the word integrity in terms of your human self, well, this house has that, and so I want you to know that, um, I'm not one to call the police five times on a Friday night, but that is probably my reputation, um, from my house at five sixteen Congaree Avenue, that I've lived there since twenty thirteen, because behind me directly is a house, a fraternity house, that they climb over the fence, they throw trash over the fence, one day I found a possum that had been burned and dumped across the fence, they party, they do the things maybe that eighteen and nineteen-year-olds do, I'm not here to talk about that, but I am here to say that this is one of the last historic neighborhoods in this city, and I just wanna put my name on the dotted line for please, saving it, um, we can't, we can't build this again, we can't find more space for it, the houses are there, my house is a hundred and two years old, and I just, I know the buzzer's going off, so thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Jill Armbruster, um, I'm at three nineteen Harden Street, uh, thank you for your service, as Sydney pointed out, it's a volunteer board, and I know this is an easy job, um, but thanks for letting us have a voice today, and thank you to all my neighbors and friends, um, beyond the impact to just the residential neighborhood, I'd like you to consider the impact to the Five Points District, Mr. Cook, you as a successful business owner there can probably appreciate this, um, Five Points is unique and people go there because of its unique character and that char- And that character isn't because of the new cheap construction. It's because of the buildings that have been there, the infrastructure that has been there, the infrastructure that's being improved. Thank you, Representative Rose. And this house really serves as a visual entryway to Five Points in a lot of ways. There's hardly a more visible house in the neighborhood as you're driving to or from Five Points. So, I'd really like you to consider that aspect of this as well while you're deliberating this decision. And I second everything that my neighbors and friends have said about protecting the character of this neighborhood. And we are not against college housing or college students. It's part of the fabric of the neighborhood. We love the energy. We love the festiveness of it. We're willing to deal with that, but we're kind of at our max. And this house is special and serves a unique role in our neighborhood and in the Five Points District. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
I am Suzy Hayward. And yes, I am the mother of Carol Hayward and Caitlin, who live right next door. I also was on Planning Commission for nine years. And I was going to try to give you a little wrap-up and a little history of somehow that the west side of Harden Street got left out of neighborhoods. And this happened, I think, while I was on Planning Commission because I had to kind of stay out of the Wales Garden part so I could vote on, to keep it completely cleans, so that I could vote when Wales Garden came up to Formanugger Association. Shandon starts on the other side of Harden Street. If you're coming up the hill from Five Points, it starts on the left. Wales Garden really is kind of centered around the hill coming up on Saluda, and we branched off of that. We were told, I'm pretty sure Cole's Jackson, when Cole's Lawton, when she started, the Neighborhood Association was told by Shandon, they didn't want us to start an association. They wanted us to be part of theirs. But we had issues with Five Points and with the university that they did not have. So, that was why we tried to start our own. And I do not know why, and Cole's, bless her heart, is kicking herself for why that side of Harden Street wasn't included in Wales Garden. We're going to try to amend that and do our best to get that part of Five Points, that part of Harden Street in. But in the meantime, this house is gorgeous. Have you looked at it on the internet? If you haven't, please pull it up. It is one of the most gorgeous historical structures left in town. And let me leave you with this. I told a friend of mine, Jane Emerson, I said, "Your mother is channeling me." And she said, "What do you mean?" And I said, "Your mother is talking to me every night about this house." Her mother was the Jenny Drier who stood in front of that bulldozer at the Robert Mills' house and created Historic Columbia. She was the reason that we have the houses. The entire Historic District was up for the bulldozer. So, please think about this. Think about the character of our town and think about the fact that young people cannot compete with developers when they won't buy a home for their children. These are very lucky young people who are both two incomes usually, who are very successful, who can afford to be in this neighborhood. But we need to make sure that we look at not only selling out developers and changing zoning, which we need to keep this zoning, we need to change this zoning and get this done, but we also need to look at bed and breakfasts and this AD&amp;V thing. People can make too much money on that for young people to be able to compete with them to buy starter home. And we need these people in the city of Columbia. As you saw, these are vital people. These are the citizens we need. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service. After nine years of doing it, I know what you give up.
My name is Francis Goldstein. I live at 411 Harden Street, two doors down from this. I've lived there for about 25 years. This is, I want to thank you for inviting us to speak. This is my first time in this chamber. And as I look around, this beautiful recessed ceiling, this ornate chandelier, these windows that Nikki was talking about that are so, so well-done and the carvings, the columns, you know, I'm reminded that there are some things that have a human element that are worth preserving. And that's, that's the way that I feel about this house. It's, it's unique, it's beautiful, and it is worth preserving. Someone needs to fall in love with it and keep it up and make it still be a part of the Columbia community, which I love so much and I've lived here for so long. I, you know, I don't object to college students. I mean, every Sunday after a football game, I pick up all the beer cans from my yard, from my front yard, from my backyard. And, you know, it's part of being in an academic community and we benefit, we all benefit from being in an academic community. That's part of the reason why we moved here. So, you know, there's always pluses and minuses. I don't object to college students, but we have to coexist. We have to keep the things that are beautiful about Columbia while we enshrine all aspects of our community. And I think this house is a very important part of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or concerns from the Planning Commission?
I have a question for staff. Is there currently an application or is there a developer developing something on there or not? I do hear a lot of mention of student housing.
No, I do not believe we have an actual application at this point, but the house is for sale. So, I'm not sure, you know, to what extent the, you know, development interest is going in that direction. That is certainly a possibility under the current zoning.
Okay. So, somebody could, but somebody could buy that property and turn that house into a multifamily house, a duplex?
Or more so, yes. The, you know, the property is zoned for general residential, which, which allows one unit per, I believe, 5,000 square feet of lot area.
Okay. And then I did see that we got an email about somebody wanting to construct some, like eight, possibly more units in its place. Could they do that?
Yes.
What's the max, like maximum units you could put there?
Let me calculate the size of the lot. I apologize, I don't have that in front of me. Looks like you said eight tenths of an acre.
Four seven five.
Yeah. So...
Yes, a bad acre.
And I guess the additional question is with the current house as it stands, if we were to go from the current zoning of RM1 to RSF2, could college students technically still live there? Like, could it be rented out to college students?
Yeah.
So, this wouldn't stop college students from moving in then?
No. No, but to answer the earlier question, if it is three-quarters of an acre, there would be about six units that could be built on the site.
Okay.
Assuming they meet, you know, setbacks and all those other requirements.
So, under the existing zoning, there could be six units, right?
And actually, I'm sorry.
Under the existing zoning, there could be up to six units built?
Up to six units and then, and Listen to was correct to point out that townhomes, there's not necessarily a restriction on how many units, but there are dimensional requirements. So, it's possible it could be more than six if, if, if they're able to fit those lots on there, so.
All right. And these would be attached, right? There's not a provision that it has to be detached, or is there?
RM1 does allow for multifamily, so it could be attached or detached, yeah.
All right. And just so I'm clear, the new zoning, what is the maximum density with the proposed zoning that we're considering?
Sure. The new zoning is a single-family residential zoning district.
Single-family detached dwelling.
Correct.
So, how many of those could you put on this .75-acre lot?
Well, you would, you would have, well, it would be one on the lot. If, you know, theoretically, you might be able to subdivide it. I have to check the dimensions, but I believe the requirement, and I apologize, is...
Okay.
Oh, sorry. There we go. So, a lot width is 60 feet, so it could theoretically be subdivided and maybe there'd be...
Yeah, it looks like it could be from...
But those would be single-family residences, not, not, you know, for example, multifamily dwellings would not be permitted.
Is the property owner represented here or do they, have they stated what their desire is?
I'm not, I'm not aware of if they're here or not. Certainly, the property was posted and...
Yeah, it just seems interesting, you know, there's zero opposition. There's a lot of people proponents for this zoning change. I'm just curious what the property owner would want to do. So, anyway.
It's for sale.
Okay. So, it's an estate situation?
I think, did you mention the property was for sale?
Yep.
So, could somebody purchase this property right now thinking that it's zoned the current zoning and then by the time the sale goes through, the zoning has changed? And then could we, in essence, receive a request down the line to change the zoning back?
You could, in theory, receive a request to rezone the property, yes. But it would go through the same process.
So, I have a quick question. So...
Yeah, just come back.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm inclined to support this, but my question, I guess, not to make you just sit there and do research after research, but are all the adjacent parcels the same zoning as this currently is? Are they across the street the same zoning? Is this entire, like, map I'm looking at right now zone the same?
Sure. No, the, actually, yeah, you're going to the, is it the next one? Did it fall out? So...
So, that whole strip is zoned exactly the same?
On the west side of Harden Street, it is zoned RM1. On the east side, directly across the street, it's zoned RSF2, which is what the proposed zoning district is.
I guess, again, I'm inclined to support this, but my, you know, issue broadly, like, going down the road is every time a house goes up for sale on the street, they'll just be right back here having the same issue. I just, you know, there's no point to me saying that, but that's, that's what, you know, seems like what this little strip of area is going to be for the next foreseeable future unless the entire area was rezoned, I suppose. Is that correct?
Yes, right. I mean, you know, there certainly could be a rezoning request, but...
Understood, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Staff, could you remind us when this area was rezoned to RSF2? Someone mentioned it was rezoned from RM1.
Well, the request before you is to rezon it to RSF2. There was a comment earlier about a change in zoning, but the change in zoning was just kind of a translation. So, it went from general residential to general residential, just with a different name.
So, it's been in this type of zoning for a while?
For decades, yes.
Any other concerns from council?
Madam Chair, I'm inclined to support this as well. My only concern, you know, as we think through what the plan for this area is long-term and we just, you know, somebody mentioned the housing shortage in Columbia. Given that we don't know for certain that they're going to tear down and build new units on there, that if we leave it, you know, we do change it to residential, college students can still live there, move there. So, I don't know if that solves that problem. I'm wondering if we're not just essentially limiting who can live there, right? Like, I don't know if we're really helping the housing shortage by saying, you know, this can only be a single-family home. And you talk about trends and people getting married later and whatnot. I just, I don't know if that really helps the housing shortage or if it aligns with what the long-term plan is for this area.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I want to add, so the existing property owners, is there an effort other than posting, because these people could live anywhere, is there an effort to contact the existing property owners to let them know that this is occurring?
I can call them right now. It's been listed in the yard. And they have a realtor who I assume talks to them.
I'm just...
We can't really have testimony that's not on the microphone.
Let the administrator respond.
Right. And, right, that's correct. If you do want to speak, we do ask you to speak in the microphone. However, to answer the question about posting a notification to property owners, you know, this is the first step in the process. The next step is city council. So, again, you are making a recommendation to city council. When we do advertise and post a property for the public hearing at city council, it's a 30-day notice and letters are mailed out to, of course, the property owner and adjacent property owners as well.
As a standard practice.
As a standard practice, yes.
That's fine. Just want to make sure they know what's going on.
Any other comments from council? Hearing no, no, entertain the motion of the action we should take on this item.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve ZMA 427 Harden Street, TMS 113110307.
Is there a second?
Yes, a second, then.
It's been moved in second that we approve ZMA 2024-0016, 427 Harden Street, TMS 113110307. Any other further questions? Alders in favor, then let it be known by the sign, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We are now here in NACP Plan 2024-001 concerning the Riverbanks Community Mobility Plan.
Madam Chair, maybe we'll just give a minute for the room to clear out since we can't really hear.
We've been on the mountain so long.
We have to finish the meeting if y'all can exit quietly.
If y'all could exit quickly and quietly, please. Your voice is louder than mine. Please exit as soon as you can. Please exit so we may continue the meeting.
I'll speak loudly.
Go ahead.
Not my normal. So, I know that we may be the only ones to hear this presentation and that you guys have heard from the consultant team before on this a couple months ago, so I will make it brief. But the Reaching Riverbanks Community Mobility Plan is a plan that the Central Midlands Council of Governments worked with the City of Columbia and Richland County on. And the study area is what you... And the study area is what you see before you in orange. It pretty much heads north of Elmwood, Avenue along the rivers, and then south of I-20, where I guess we're not going to get snow tomorrow, but. So this area is both within the city limits in portions, where you see in light blue, and it's also in unincorporated Richland County, so it's a multi-jurisdictional area. And it's one of those areas, like the Capital City Mill District, that we think it's important to plan for together because those fates are kind of intertwined, if you will. Next slide, or here. No, you're fine. So just a brief overview, we did start this planning process about a year ago now, in the fall of 2023. I guess it's a little bit more than a year, but the design charrette, our first kind of huge community engagement was at Dutch Square Mall, and that started out, I can talk quieter now. That started out in February of 2024. So during that process, we heard from a lot of members of the community, the consultant team, Tool Design. If you remember, Kevin Bacon was our consultant on that. Did come and give presentations, and the team heard from folks through focus groups and other types of engagement. And then they went back to develop the plan after that. And then in September is when y'all heard from Kevin here. They had another public meeting, September 11th, and then on the 12th, they came to planning commission. In October, spoke to city councils, economic development committees. So they've also had some information headed their way as well. So there are just a few key findings of the plan. Basically, it all boils down to nothing that surprises us. A lot of the development and land use that's tied to this area is tied to the corridors because the corridors are almost impassable for local trips. So what that really made this consultant team do was really rethink how, how to plan for the area and think about those local trips within the area instead of always planning for the corridors. Because we know there are always a lot of housing in the area. There's, it's still in close proximity to downtown. There is a lot of multifamily that you just can't see if you're driving down Broad River or Bush River, so it's an interesting area. And I'm not going to read the vision and goals, but I think the important thing with any plan, and that we emphasized earlier in training, is that the vision and goals really come out of that community engagement and the public planning process. And so that is really what they use to define the recommendations of the plan that then we end up reporting to you on as you consider things like rezonings. So the vision and goals that are developed here frame the recommendations. And the way that they drafted those recommendations is to look at the plan on a framework. So they looked first and foremost at river access because although it's an area that is at, you know, right before the confluence, it's pretty hard to get to the rivers from those neighborhood connections or from Broad River Road. They looked at the street network, where there might be some possible connections. Also, some rethinking of the rights of way of those major corridors as well. So as projects come along, we think about how we might change those corridors. They looked at the growth strategy and probably what this is, what's going to be most relevant for y'all. What they did was they took our existing future land use classifications, like we talked about earlier, and they took the counties. And when we developed our future land use classifications and the county did theirs, we actually did them in concert. So the counties are broader because they're a little less finer-grained of a development regulation out in unincorporated Richland County. But the consultant team kind of pulled those back together and made them match up and looked at areas of growth versus conservation. So when, you know, in the future, we come to you and provide some additional feedback based on the plan for recommendations for rezoning or something like that, we would talk about this growth and conservation, but also about the future land use because there is no recommendation to change the future land use map with this area plan. Just a grouping to make it easier for folks to understand what those types of future land use classifications mean. And then there are also opportunity sites with any plan. We look at catalyst projects. What I thought was neat about this plan was instead of kind of specifically designing a site, they said, you know, for example, Dutch Square Mall, we know something's probably going to happen with it at some point. Depending on what scenario happens, whether they keep the buildings, they divide up the buildings, or they completely redevelop the site, they looked at ways to provide connectivity for the neighborhoods that used Dutch Square already to drive through to access the roadways. So that was an interesting way to approach that for us. And that's why I didn't show you the future land use map yet, because again, we're talking about the growth. And there are no proposed changes to the rezoning as well. Sometimes we see that with area plans. We don't hear, that's not a concern. So the request that's before you tonight is to make a recommendation to council on whether or not to adopt the plan as an addendum to the comprehensive plan. Again, it doesn't propose any kind of additional things for you at this time. What, how we will use it moving forward is we will use it as a policy document, like we've talked about in the past. But also, the plan has already been adopted by the Central Midlands Council of Governments, and we anticipate it will be adopted by Richland County as well. And that will give it some weight for transportation agencies as well. So SCDOT works closely with the COG for funding. The Richland Penny may also utilize that. The COG itself will utilize their adopted plans for recommendations. So we may see some transportation projects that would come out of this plan that maybe the city wouldn't necessarily be as engaged with, but may also be something like that, so. Do y'all have any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So you're saying the transportation agencies may utilize the plans? I saw in the plans, it had like a recommendation, I guess, for I-126. That's not saying that it will happen, it's just a recommendation?
Yeah, so a lot of times with these planning processes, and it is a COG plan, so it's a transportation and land use plan, I'm sorry, Council of Governments, the Central Midlands Council of Governments. But so they're, part of their charge from the Central Midlands Council of Governments was to look at mobility within the area. So one of the ways they chose to do that was to look at the existing street network. A lot of the recommendations are focused on kind of those interconnections, neighborhood, you know, like the neighborhood connections, like maybe punched through a street because you've got all these subdivisions and every subdivision has to come off of Broad River Road instead of being able to connect. And you can't visit your neighbor if you're not in the same exact subdivision. But they do make some recommended streetscape changes and lane reassignments. For like 126, that would be a much larger project, so that would be something that our federal transportation agencies, state transportation agencies would need to move forward with. And we have a number of plans that make those types of recommendations. And they're always helpful because they're looking at, you know, maybe more current traffic data than the road was designed around. They're looking at changes in land use, that sort of thing.
So before they would do, like, if they did go with the possible plan, they'd do a traffic study before changing it from four-lane to two-lane?
Yeah, yeah, so these are more illustrative than they would be like a full engineered set of plans.
I didn't know if we were approving the whole change I-26. I was like, that's a big approval.
It would be great power, but, but no. Any other questions?
I understand that the church has purchased most of Dutch Square property. How does their plans fit in conjunction with the overall comprehensive plan that you're looking at now?
Yeah, so they were engaged in the planning process. This consultant did have some initial conversations with them during the, I don't think they were able to attend the charrette, but then had some follow-up communication with them. My understanding is that they may not be making building changes, so that's where that's, you know, a helpful thing about the way this plan addresses the different scenarios for each of those opportunity sites. It suggests kind of those transportation connections around the site, whether they're keeping it the same way and maybe changing the uses within it. Or say, I used to live in Asheville, so like where the outlets are on 26, that used to be a Dutch Square Mall, basically, and now they've removed the roof because the roof was going to cost like $20 million, so they removed the roof and it's open air and it's outlets. So that might be a different transportation modality for them.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion as to what action we should take.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve NAC Plan-2024-001, Reaching Riverbanks Community Mobility Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we should approve NAC Plan 2024-001, the Reaching Riverbanks Community Mobility Plan. Are there any questions? All those in favor, then let it be known by the sign aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion approved. We will now move to the other business section with the election of our 2025 chair and vice chair.
Do we get to hear campaign speeches, or?
So, did you already give them the ballots?
Yeah, that's what I was curious about. Do you really want the job? Do you want the job? Who wants the jobs?
Nobody.
Okay.
Don't everyone volunteer at once?
Yes.
Oh, so it's the first round. We're just going to write the name of our chair. Did you, does everybody know who is?
Help me explain what we're doing, please.
We've already gotten like the nominations and everybody's accepted the nominations.
Sorry. Thank you. We're voting for the chair. You can go ahead and fill out your vice chair, if you like, and have it ready. Is there anyone, please check your ballots to make sure you turned in your chair ballot.
I've turned it in.
Now vice chair. Oh, thank y'all.
Want to change business cards or anything?
I'll buy that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Madeline, for doing that.
Any other business that we need to?
I don't think so. Is there any other business? Anybody? Anybody? Nope. Okay.
I just want to thank everybody for your indulgence today with all of the comments that we had. I really appreciate your support and then listening to everybody and letting them all be heard. So we thank you for that, and if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We have a quick question. If we get stopped outside, should we not speak?
Yeah, can you give us a good professional statement to say? Because we saw the reporter go like waiting outside. We wanted a.
Now that we want to, but.
You could always ask this after we adjourn.
I motion for that we adjourn. I motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that this meeting is adjourned. All in favor, let it be known by the sign aye.
Aye.
No opposes. Sorted.